Hold me in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Trakis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a call.
Sue motion for approval of the journal.
Second. Oh, I'll make the motion. How about that?
Sounds good. All in favor?
I move for approval of the journal meeting of January 31st, 2017.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no bid opening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises, zoning or road bridge matters this evening, so move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. And that will be the order.
Item number two, all districts.
Receive and file same motion through item number four.
Item number five.
Receive and file, county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. And that will be the order.
Item number six, all districts.
Receive and file same motion through number seven, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, all districts.
Uh, receive and file as, um, is Richard, is Mr. Noel, how do you say his last name? Noel?
Noel.
Noel, our new director of community, director of tech, information technology, is that person here?
One with Noel.
We just, uh, if you are, just wanted you to acknowledge we had some council members that had some IT questions today that came up, so we'll, we'll follow up later. Um, receive and file an appointment be approved as recommended.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine.
Receive and file, county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion for item number 10, and that will be the order.
Item number 11, sixth district.
Mr. Chairman, receive file and the deposit agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 12, sixth district.
Receive file and contract in an amount not to exceed $677,439.14 be approved and awarded to NB West Contracting, Inc. as recommended, and authorization for revision of the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13, fifth district.
Receive and file.
Still ordered.
Item number 14, seventh district.
Receive file and a deposit agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 15, fourth district.
Receive file, county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Still ordered.
Item number 16.
Uh, please drive from the order business.
Still ordered.
Item number 17, all districts.
This time, any council member may place in nomination the name of any qualified candidate for the position of county auditor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Inessa Spring.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jessica Clark.
A second.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. John Vogel from 9769 Crawford Drive, Saint Louis, Missouri, 6123.
Second.
Other nominations?
Yes, I have another nomination, Rachel Coleman, I'm sorry, Coleman.
Cheryl Coleman?
Yes.
All second. Another nominations? Hazel, Hazel, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Erby could not be here tonight. She asked me to nominate Mark Tucker for her. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? None. This communication is to be received and filed, and the administrative director is directed to place notice of closure of the nominations for the position of county auditor on the agenda for the council meeting scheduled February 14th, 2017, and further order to place the names of the persons nominated at this meeting on the order of business for the council meeting scheduled for February 21st, 2017. I will mention that further nominations will be in order at the next council meeting on February 14th. And that will be the order. Please move to the add-ons.
No add-ons this evening, Mr. Chair.
Report from county executive.
Nothing further, report.
Thank you. Special committees. Uh, report from the committee of the whole, um, January 31st, 2017, receive file and adopt the report as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report is adopted. Public forum.
We have quite a few speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Fourteen speakers.
Fourteen speakers. When your name is called, please, um, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Each person will have three minutes.
Mr. Chair, I now state the name of the speaker and then the person following him so that they can be ready. Our first speaker this evening is Kenneth McLendon, will be followed by Christella Hart.
County executive and council members. First of all, question, and I want the whole council to consider this. Can the agenda go on those screens so we can have one? Because we have no agenda for the night, okay? There's no agenda. So if it's possible, it would be nice if you could put the agenda on there. We can see what you guys are talking about because tonight we just got a lot of papers, but no agenda. Thank you. The other thing I'd like to ask is, mention, is that, uh, we elected, uh, Ms. Gray to be our representative in four. I think as a county council members as a whole, you guys need to look at what she did. We asked her to represent us. We elected her. We wanted her to represent us. She knows what we need in four, okay? It's not that someone else in another district know what we need. We need a lot of things in four. We have not had representation in four in the last fifteen to twenty year, in, in four in the last fifteen to twenty years. We just had other people come in and do things, but we never had representation. Now, we need, Ms. Ms. Gray is trying to do something that will benefit our district. We, I would like for each council member to think, take in consideration what she's representing, how she's representing us. Let, give her an opportunity to do that. We need some representation in four. We don't need anybody that came from, that other districts, uh, when, when Northwest Plaza was, uh, put on the agenda and they did what they had to do. I'm sure that the people over in the sixth district didn't make a nomination to do that. It came from there. So give our district opportunity to do what needs to be done in four, because we have a lot of issues. Nor, I mean, uh, Jamestown Mall is a big issue right now. There's a lot of hidden stuff and a lot of hidden agenda. Yes, this county council needs to do some things about minority. We need minority representation in four. We have that. We elected her for that, for that issue, because white people like knows what, know what we want and what we need, and that will benefit us in the long run. So I would ask tonight that you guys give her the respect in the things that she's trying to do to benefit us in four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christella Hart, followed by Curtis Faulkner.
Let's, uh, hold the applause out of respect for everyone. I do appreciate the enthusiasm, but let's, um, let our speakers have the floor.
Good evening, Councilmember St. Louis County. My name is Christella Hart. I've been reporting, 22 Phil Stone Drive. I'm a member of the St. Louis Prophecy Committee. I'm here tonight to talk about the Jamestown Mall. I would like to know why Councilwoman Rochelle Gray is holding up the passage of the bill to relight the mall so that we can redevelop it. Uh, what are your intentions? Is that something in it for you? Or you just want control of it? Are you working in the best interest for the people here, residents of your district? From what I have seen, I don't think so. Residents of your district want something done about the mall. We want that mall redeveloped, and we want, we don't want you holding up the, the progress of it. So why don't you just work along with the, the council members and compromise the bill so that the Jamestown Mall can be relighted and redeveloped? If you can't do that, maybe you don't need to be on a council board. That's it.
Next speaker is Curtis Faulkner, followed by Michelle Brannon. Curtis Faulkner?
Good evening. I'm Curtis Faulkner, and as a resident of North County District Four, I am happy to say that, as I understand from last week, that the issue regarding the Jamestown Mall more or less came to a head and was resolved regarding, uh, the legislation or the amendment that was offered up by our District Four representative. I say that I'm glad that that's the case because there are many of us who are working diligently to try to work with the county economic development and getting this particular project legs. We know that as North County residents, that for the most part, we're on our own, and we in turn will find ourselves, if we continue to have delays on this particular project, further behind an eight ball that we cannot afford. Uh, it's going to take some time, and it's going to take some convincing, and any kind of discretion that take place among you here will only further making that particular effort more difficult. Uh, there, as I said, some of us are working diligently. We're working to find individuals who we can interest in development. We know that there are steps that have to be taken. We know control of the property has to be had, and as soon as we can do that, then some of these other kinds of conversations can begin to take more meaning to individuals that we are trying to seek to help. So, uh, that is my particular statements in reference to thank you for at least moving this to the next step. I'm hoping that there is no further dissensions that causes any further delays on this, and I will continue to work as a member of the community and hopefully with my representative in making this particular project, uh, come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Michelle Brannon, followed by David Taylor.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Brannon, 5209 Trail Oaks Avenue in Florissant, Missouri, North County. And I would like to talk about, I, I represent Joshua Media Ministries International. We were the ministry that came in to try to purchase Jamestown Mall, and we had started negotiations in October of 2015, and we actually had a, a letter of intent on the table with Macy's for a million dollars. And we had met in February with Gil Choak, which is a representative of the county, because we wanted to work with the county in order to, to have, um, the county's, you know, the, the buy-in, the representation, because we really want to give back into the community, into North County. Gil Choak met with us along with Chris Faulkner on February 10th. They told us to go meet with an architect, to go get these plans, to come back and let's, you know, and hire an attorney. We came back on May 9th, met with Gil Choak, with our architecture design, with our architect in place, with our, with everything in place, and we were told, okay, well, you need to submit that. We'll go ahead and submit that to the former councilman at the time. You'll hear back from us. Keep in mind at this time, we, we could have closed on them, on the, um, Macy's, but we chose not to because we really wanted the cooperation with the county, and we were encountering a lot of resistance during this time. We, um, sent the architecture design, the blueprint and everything to, uh, to Sweeney, Sheila Sweeney, in June of 2016. We had already supplied this information to Gil Choak, and we also had our attorney on the table who was also referred to as actually by somebody from the county who told us, you know, we needed to get somebody who was equipped in zoning. So we did all of this. We had a million dollar contract, and it was only until after we supplied them with our blueprint information and all of our designs for the entire mall that we wanted to give back into the community, have jobs for people there, um, a number of things that we were, that we were talking about with that, that we heard on the news that it sold for a dollar. And this is after we had already had a letter of intent. The county had then, uh, prior to that, went to Macy's, which we had the attorney validate this information from Macy's, said that they did, in fact, the county told them that we didn't have the funding to be able to do that, although we provided them with a letter, a preapproval letter for the entire project. And so we were very, um, caught off guard for this whole thing, for what we tried to do for the community in North County. And I would like to, um, I know Dr. Taylor is going to come up here. He's actually the CEO of Joshua Media Ministries and also resident of North County, and he would like to explain the vision.
Next speaker is David Taylor, followed by Susan Clark.
Hello, everybody. My name is Dr. Taylor, and, um, um, I'm at 2008 Victory Way Lane. We did come in to purchase the mall. I mean, I had a vision to, uh, build up Jamestown Mall again, to, in a $400 million vision, to build an arena, to build multiple things as you would see on the blueprints. And, um, you know, we were basically, I feel, hijacked, um, from what happened. And, um, we, we got wind that someone told them that we didn't have the money to purchase, which the bank had already approved us, but it was, we feel an underhand deal. But my purpose for coming here is that we want to rebuild the Jamestown Mall again. We want to not only do nonprofit ministry, we want to do for-profit ministry that will help bring tax dollars as well. And to, we had all of that configured in there, in there. We want to help minorities. We don't just want to outsource the jobs to, uh, people who are not part of the community. We want to include the community, uh, of Jamestown, I mean, of North County. I've been living in North County now for probably, I think, almost twenty years. I'm from, actually, Memphis Tennessee, and I came here with a vision to build up that area and to really mobilize the world to come to this area, which our ministry is global in over 200 countries of the world. And so, when I'm talking figures and these numbers, I'm not making things up. You know, we are very serious about doing what we're going to do, and, um, I appreciate you hearing our heart on this. Um, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Susan Clark, followed by Tom Sullivan.
Good evening, Council. Susan Clark, Ladue, Missouri, 9836 Wild Deer Road. Um, much more prosaic this evening. Y'all know I've been sitting here watching for the last couple years as much, as often as I can, trying to understand how things work here and how things get done, and, and what I can do, um, to move forward. Some topics that I'm very interested in, which would be primarily how the justice system works here, are policing. As such, I have been trying to pay attention to some of the contracts being awarded, um, to the Justice Center and to the Police Department. It's hard to do when y'all meet as a committee of the whole. Um, don't publish the report, and, um, then just enter it into the record here today. It's discouraging. Um, I'm sure the meals report, I'm sure the company is going to serve wonderful, great, nutritious food, but how they make their profits, how you make money off of those concessions matters. And I don't think it's unreasonable for us to want to have that discussion and those discussions out in public. If you choose not to do it here, then please at least announce it so those of us who are interested can listen. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I, thank you, Colonel. Chair, uh, I'm your, well, I'm assuming, I don't know where in Ladue you are, but, um, it is a public meeting, the committee meetings. Um, if you can, and if not, you can call my office anytime. Well, there are, the committee meetings are on the agenda, which is publicized on our website every week.
Is the agenda of the committee publicized every week?
I believe so.
Because I've been trying to follow the contracts.
Well, the contract information, we'd have to look into, but the meetings are public meetings, and they are, are advertised. Um, and if there's any other questions you need, I can get you minutes of the meeting or what have you. Well, we have, um,
Thank you.
They're recorded, and, so, anytime, just call my office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Mark, and I'm afraid I can't read the last name, um, from St. Peters.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, it was surprising to read the news release for the audit commissioned by the county executive, referred to as a top-to-bottom forensic audit, which it is not. Mr. Stanger also used that phrase on a radio, radio interview yesterday, yet the auditors do not refer to it as a forensic audit. They call it a, quote, "special countywide audit," and the word forensic was never even used in the county's request for proposals. The big-ticket item announced from the initial audit findings over a year ago was a possible 10.9 million in duplicate payments to vendors. The final amount of duplicate payments was $11,000, quite a difference. What about the possible conflict of interest with vendors? "We did not identify any conflicts of interest in the vendors sampled," said the auditors. The initial findings raised a specter of phantom employees on the payroll. According to the final report, "We confirm the existence of all employees sampled." The news release mentioned savings from the closed, from closing Lakeside Center, but Lakeside was not mentioned in the audit. There are many unanswered questions regarding the special audit, which cost taxpayers over $200,000. Mr. Chairman, I believe there needs to be a council of the whole meeting on the audit, and urge you to schedule one. A few weeks ago, the council received an opinion from attorney Robert Bliss concerning the Jamestown Mall redevelopment. The opinion was dated January 17th. On January the 18th, the county executive's campaign committee received a contribution from Mr. Bliss for $12,500. So on the same day he signed the opinion letter, Robert Bliss apparently also signed a big check for the Stanger campaign. Jamestown redevelopment could be another cash cow for Mr. Stanger's campaign fund, just like Northwest Plaza redevelopment. Also on tonight's agenda, number 23 is for the Shot Spotter System in Castle Point. I think the council should have given this a lot more scrutiny. I was at a meeting, oh, a couple of months ago in Spanish Lake about crime prevention, and one of the, one of the, someone over there was from the county police department, and this, this system has problems. For one thing, it picks, it's supposed to pick up when someone shoots off a, a gun, but it picks up a bunch of other things too. For example, uh, those air stables, air staple guns that roofers use, sometimes that can be picked up. Sometimes fireworks can be picked up. There is some cities around this, around the country, including Oakland, California, who installed a system, and then they got rid of it because it created so many problems. So when you have a, a system that's picking up all kind of, uh, noise other than guns being fired, it seems to me that there's going to be a lot of dry runs for the police department. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker is Mark, and Mr. Chair, if we could ask him to spell his name when he comes forward, and he will be followed by Carol Strawbridge. Mark from St. Peters? Then the next speaker will be Carol Strawbridge, followed by Albert Walton.
Good evening, I'm Carol Strawbridge. I'm a North County resident, living at 1315 Chapelton Drive, Ferguson. I think the key word that I'm going to throw out to everybody is transparency. We hear that all the time, and if you're not transparent, then you're going to have some mistrust. So I have a concern, and this is regarding Jamestown Mall, which I spent a lot of money at, as a lot of people did. So my concern is, what are actually the plans for Jamestown Mall? As a resident, I'd like to know. And will we have an opportunity, we, the citizens who live in that area, will we have a chance to say what we would like to have there? Once before, I was, uh, with some of the council members, and I asked about housing for young people like me. I'm downsizing, but I don't want to move into a cracker box. So is housing going to be considered for someone like me who's young and thriving and still moving? I have a request. We need some updates, whatever is going on with regards to the planning. We need to have some updates. It needs to be publicized. What are the plans? What are they going to, how are they progressing? Who's going to be involved? And when are the plans going to be finalized? I'm tired of driving by that area and seeing nothing. That's my concern and my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Albert Walton, followed by Philip Duval.
Does everybody know Rochelle Walton Gray is my daughter, and I've been appalled at your treatment of my daughter. You know, we weren't a part of that Fannie Lou Hambliss group. We just sat your election out, but we not sitting out the next one. You're not going to disrespect my daughter. My daughter was elected to represent the fourth county council district, which includes Jamestown Mall. She decided that you weren't going to pick the developer. She decided that you weren't going to pick the developer and increase your coffers like you did in Northwest Plaza. And we were appalled that you, all five of the white members of the council voted against her bill. Why? It didn't make a lick of sense. If anybody re expected to coalition with Hazel and Rochelle, it was the three Republicans. Why? Because Rick Strain only lost by a thousand votes, and that was because he only got that close because of the Fannie Lou Hambliss election. What would have happened if we, who have a real strong political organization, who have elected over seventy people in the last twenty years, had have come out and supported Strain? No, we decided to leave you alone. We just said, no, we're not going to get involved in that. We're going to be involved in the next one. You can believe that. You ain't going to fool with my daughter. She had the best bill going. For this lady to say, you holding up the, the mall, she didn't read the bill that you had. The bill clearly provided for blinding of the mall.
That's right.
It clearly provided for blinding of the mall, so that the LRA could turn the buildings down or redevelop, or hire somebody to redevelop them. But it also said that, since there is no plan, as this lady just pointed out, that Representative Councilwoman Rochelle Walton Gray would demand that they come back in here and give an actual plan by which they're going to redevelop the mall. And for people to say that bill is illegal, everything this man has had to all pass has been illegal. The court is already called, rule to this bill is illegal, and you voted for them. So what this general over here had, apartment complexes coming in his area, he said he wanted them there. He defeated the man who was supporting him to let one of his daughters build that apartment complex. But Rochelle not supposed to be able to do that. It's her district. She going to respect each one of y'all's district. You got something you want for your district? She's, she's not going to oppose it. Hazel pointed that out. She said every, since she been here, for the ten years, twelve years she been here, everybody voted for whatever you wanted your own district. First time it ever happened with black person.
Mr. Walton?
Comes up with a claim.
Wrap, conclude your speech. Thank you.
In conclusion, you ain't going to mess with my daughter. I will see you in 2018.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Next speaker is Philip Duval, followed by Alicia Street.
Philip Duval, 8434 Falmouth Ferguson, 101 Halle Green Baldwin. Sorry, man, just give me a minute. I want to thank my councilmen for at least listening, uh, when I've reached out to him to talk about the same bill. Uh, I have words, because as a preacher, I, I'm not used to being timed, so I'm going to try my best to make my comments. That's my brother, and this is my sister. I was appalled too. The comments that came out of the former The comments that came out of the former councilman's mouth, I found no joy. And so if I have to make my comments and leave, it's not 'cause I'm running like a coward, it's 'cause I have other things to do. Those things that Mr. O'Meara said surely were not representative, or was it representative of the man he really was? Black History Month, "Lift Every Voice and Sing" was publicly performed as a poem for Abraham Lincoln for his birthday on February 12, 1900. Don't have time, because I had to sit here and say some of those early comments, but I know you're familiar with them. You go to the NAACP stuff, go ahead and read them again. Lift Every Voice and Sing. Human behavior has been entrapped ever since the fall of Adam, whether it was fiery furnace, Daniel in the lion's den, crucifixion, lynching, capital punishment. Then there was slavery, Jim Crow, segregation, and discrimination.
Yes.
The names have changed, but the results remain the same. Among the values that we hold dear, there is one that is sacred, and it's called justice. Liberty is freedom, but its twin is justice. Many of us find it hard to define, but we believe it deeply, and we're aware of it when we don't perceive it. If we leave justice out, surely we're gonna let each other know. 370-plus years of slavery, segregation, racism, Jim Crow laws, and second-class citizenship. Do not mislead our sisters. This is modern-day plantation politics. Forget about the optic, and as I said to my friend Chris Howard, we don't play the race card, we live it. And until you understand that you're gonna stop it, then, Mr. Stanger, I saw you smiling, then we'll bring Shaiet up in here and see if you smile again with that sneer.
I'll probably be smiling if you do that.
That's fine. Lastly, Dr. King will leave with his words. I'm coming to feel that people of ill will have used time much more effectively than people of goodwill. We will have to repent to this generation, not merely for the vitriolic words and actions of bad people, but the appalling silence of good people. Thank you for not mentioning tonight.
Next speaker is Alicia Street, followed by Nathan, and I'm afraid I can't read the last name.
I was only gonna speak about one thing tonight, but then as I was listening, I became a little furious and pissed off. First of all, congratulations, Ms. Gray. Thank you, you did it. Second, I am a resident of St. Louis County, 2192, seven more drive. I need to note that you guys are planning to repave Chambers Road between West Florissant and 367. It's a bumpy mess over there. If I pay my taxes, I need that road to be paved. It, it's not right. It ain't fair that we have to drive like that when I can go into your little neighborhoods and it's perfectly smooth. Secondly, Jamestown Mall. You have a representative right here from the district. I grew up in St. Louis County my whole life, 30 years. Jamestown Mall is where I hung out. That is my childhood. I don't really care to see it to be a senior citizen home, I'll be honest with you. If you do anything with Jamestown Mall, you need to make sure you do something with the youth. The youth is our future, and the fact that you guys don't even know what you wanna do with it yet, bring, ask the youth what they want from it. Ask me what I want from it. I'm only 31 years old. Hell, in 40 years, y'all gonna fucking die anyway. Excuse my language, but I'm just saying, I'm young too. The youth are young. Ask the youth what they wanna do with this project. Like, seriously? And it's frustrating that y'all not even backing this person who lives in the district. I've been knowing her since I was in high school, went to school with her daughter, and y'all can't even back the only person that's right here representing y'all district? Y'all going against, and then Stanger, you up here smiling about everything? Like, seriously? Grow, like, grow up, though. You are, you're, you're on a county seat. You're representing us, and you're smiling when the, when we speak to you, when we come voice our concerns to you. You up here smiling. What's so funny? Like, what's going on in your head? I really wanna know. I'm trying to know what you're laughing about. What is so funny? You ran your campaign to be the voice of the people, but when the people bring that voice, all you wanna do is smirk at them. Grow up, be mature. Again, thank you, Ms., congratulations, Gray. I support you, whatever you wanna do, you know my number, but we'll work on it together. And remember, it is Black History Month, and before I sit down, black lives do matter and always will matter. Peace out.
Next speaker is Nathan, and Mr. Chair, if we could ask him to spell his name for us, followed by Greg Porter.
Good evening, St. Louis County. I'm Nathan Russum, R-U-S-S-U-M. I'm from 11515 Sheffield Drive, 63033. And I'm part of the North County Problem Solving Committee, but I'm not here for that. I'm speaking on behalf of Cat DeTrek, 1718 Dalewood Court, 63136, in unincorporated North County of St. Louis. I am a Neighborhood Watch Coordinator in North County, not your district. We've, we worked very hard with the county government and the St. Louis County Police. I have been doing this for over 25 years. As you know, it takes a lot of work to see major improvements in our neighborhood and in all of St. Louis County. Being someone like you comes along, but we kept a positive outlook for you and that the work you would do. We were very sure you would want the positive improvements in all of North County, but we were wrong. I have been a council meeting, at council meeting regarding Jamestown Mall, and I'm sorry, I can't make it tonight due to my job. It is sad to see you come on the board and cause everyone involved problems. Have you ever tried to work with the council instead of against it? I hope and pray, as the St. Louis County Council meets tonight, you will sit there and decide to let the council work together, moving forward with Jamestown Mall. This is not about control, personalities, or taking credit as an individual or individuals. I think it's high time that the Walton-Grey team tries a different approach. You have a lot of people in our neighborhoods that would work with you, even if they are not from your district. It is time for you to make some positive changes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we ask Mr. Russum to spell the name of the gentleman whose statement he read?
Cat DeTrek, S-C-H-R-E-C-K.
Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Greg Porter.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Greg Porter, Number 6, Corbin Court, Forest, Missouri, Incorporated North St. Louis County, Chairman of the North St. Louis County Problem Solving Committee, President and Secretary of the Pat O'Forest Residents Association Incorporated. I'm here once again to address the council about the blighting of Jamestown Mall, and as before, my comments are directed to my representative Rochelle Gray, Rochelle Walton Gray. Since you took office in January, you have taken an obvious adversarial stance toward the county executive, the county counselor, and many of your colleagues on this council, as evidenced by your unwillingness to work on a compromise to your substitute, substitute bill number one for bill number 307. In addition, you also appear, appear to have a chip on your shoulder ever since you took your seat on the dais. I think it's time for you to get off your power trip and start doing the job that you were elected to do, which is to represent the best interests of your constituents. And one of those interests just happens to be the blighting and redevelopment of Jamestown Mall. Perhaps you also need to be reminded that you represent a single council district in St. Louis County, of which you are one of a seven-member board that acts as a whole, as opposed to having ultimate individual control over your district. As I have said before, you need to introduce a substitute bill that will pass muster of any potential legal issues. In any event that you're unwilling to do that, then another council member needs to come forth to introduce a bill that will accomplish that objective in the best interest of St. Louis County. As you can see, there's a large contingent of people here this evening who want to see Jamestown Mall blighted, so the redevelopment process can be began, can begin. At this time, would all those who are in favor of the blighting of Jamestown Mall please stand? Thank you. Hopefully, Councilwoman Walton-Grey, you now understand what your constituents want. Thank you.
Thank you. Introduction of bills.
Bill number 38, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, in ordinance, amending Chapter 725, Title VII, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, amended St. Louis County Emergency Communications System Commission by enacting a new Section 725.120, change of contracts with telecommunication providers for implementation of next-generation 911. Bill number 39, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, in ordinance, authorizing Director of Transportation to issue a special, special use permit to Exponent Systems Incorporated for installation of a new utility pole in a designated portion of County right-of-way. Bill number 40, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, in ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to a contract with Quest Diagnostics for laboratory and cytology testing services. Bill number 41, introduced by Councilmember Walton-Grey, in ordinance, providing for the appointment of a legislative research director and legal counsel to the county council. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills. Bill number 24, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Mr. Chairman, I move to perfect bill number 24.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 34, 24 is perfected.
Bill number 26, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that the bill be held on the order of business.
So ordered, bill will be held.
Bill number 29, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect, perfect bill number 29.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 29 is perfected.
Bill number 30, introduced by Councilmember Walton-Grey.
I move to perfect bill number 30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 30 is perfected.
Bill number 31, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number 31.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 31 is perfected.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Walton-Grey.
I move to perfect bill number 32.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 32 is perfected.
Bill number 33, introduced by Councilmember Walton-Grey.
I move to perfect bill number 33.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 33 is perfected.
Bill number 34, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number 34.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 34 is perfected.
Bill number 35, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Mr. Chairman, I move to perfect bill number 35.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 35 is perfected.
Bill number 36, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
I move to perfect bill number 36.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 36 is perfected.
Bill number 37, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 37. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, bill number 37 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Since all 116?
The 116 is held.
Bill number 15, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect final passage of bill number 15.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 15, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 15 is finally passed.
Bill number 21, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 21.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 21, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 21 is finally passed.
Bill number 22, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 22.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 22, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 22 is finally passed.
Bill number 23, introduced by Councilmember Walton-Grey.
I move for the final passage of bill number 23.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 23, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 23 is finally passed.
Bill number 25, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number 25.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 25, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 25 is finally passed.
Bill number 27, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move for final passage of bill number 27.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 27, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 27 is finally passed.
Bill number 28, introduced by Councilmembers Wassinger, Walton-Grey, and Trakis.
I move for final passage of bill number 28.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 28, there are six ayes and one absent.